The Chair knows the time is 6:02. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, and as ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members and panel for this hearing. Steve Judge is present, Mr. Craig Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Everett Henry.
Present.
Mr. Philip White.
Present.
And Mr. David Silver.
Present.
The quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Ms. Christine Brestrop, Town Planning Director, Jacinta Williams, Town Planner, and I think we'll be joined by Nate Malloy, Senior Planner, later on in the meeting, and I think also Carolyn Murray of KP Law will also is attending to assist us in our, and provide guidance in our deliberations. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or to gather additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where the information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition that is heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing for the variance to file this decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. Public hearing, ZBA FY 2025-04, Wayfinders, Inc., requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct 31 mixed-income rental housing in a three-story, 31-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story development with 14 proposed parking spots on the premises of 31 Southeast Street, map 15A parcel 20, in the RC Village Center Residence zoning districts, and a 47-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story building with 46 proposed parking spots on the premises of 70 Belcher Town Road, map parcel 15C and 58, 15C 59, 15C 60, in the RN and the FPC Neighborhood Residence and Flood-Clown Conservancy zoning districts. This is continued from September 19th, I think. After that, general public comment period. Other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours, and then adjournment. So that's our agenda for tonight. We have no minutes at this point. We'll do that the next time. But before we start on our, on our agenda, I was lucky enough to attend a reception for Chris Brushup today. This is her last, I don't know if it's her last day, but it's her last ZBA meeting. And then she's going to retire. And I just want to say a couple of things. That when I was first appointed as an alternate, Chris was the person that gave me the orientation. And she's been just a classic example of a really good town staffer. She has, she was expert in what she put in her area. She was knowledgeable and dedicated. She was dedicated to the process as well as to the town. I think she just truly has a soft spot for all the development in this town. She feels strongly about it. She has an opinion, and, but it is not an opinion that is, she doesn't have an agenda, but she has an opinion. And when that opinion was given, it carried great weight. Chris, I just think that you did a phenomenal job for 20 years for this town. I've only been a beneficiary of it for eight, but during those eight years, I really think that you've done quite, quite a lot of work that's benefited everybody in this town. And so, thank you so much for all your efforts. We really celebrate your time and your tenure here at the town and all your work with us on the ZBA. And I am happy to note that Chris has volunteered to help us going forward, at least for the solar array project and for, maybe for other things. We've got a lot on our plate. And your expertise will be missed, and as well as your cheerful demeanor and your dedication to all of us. So, thank you, Chris. Congratulations. And I hope to, hope we get a chance to continue to work with you to the extent you want to, to the extent you want to, and fewer late-night meetings.
Thank you very much, Steve. I've really enjoyed working with you all. It's been a privilege to work for the town. Thank you.
Okay. The first order of business is ZBA FY 2025-04, Wayfinders, Inc., requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B. Topics for, for this meeting were stormwater management, stormwater infrastructure, and the lighting plan. And we had some follow-up questions from our last meeting, which was to confirm if the oil tanks will and have been removed. More information from the applicant regarding the residential rental bylaw waiver. We'd asked about laundry facilities. I know that the architect was going to look at that and perhaps there's some development or some, since that, since last week's meeting. We also discussed that there were going to be changes made to try to reduce the visibility of the HVAC systems on the roof, and then the lighting study for the board to review. What I, from what I understand, Jamie, is that the lighting plan is being compiled, but it's not done at this time to, to present to us. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They're, they're working on that and they will have that for next meeting.
Great. Okay. We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. That's fine. It was asking for a quick turnaround. And then we had, we'll go through these other items as we go through. But first, I want to go through the submissions before we get to the specifics of the, both the topics as well as the responses to our questions. We received a document titled C 5.0 Site Utility Plan submitted September 23rd. And also included were two staff submissions, meeting schedules for the ZBA and a schedule for the Wayfinders comprehensive permit. I think that's the extent of the submissions, and there's no public comment that we've received. Okay. All right. So, Jamie, give us your name and address for the record, and then we can talk about the stormwater management plan, and please provide us an update on your meeting with the Conservation Commission, which I think was last night, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
Whoever, who's ever supposed to do that? Just give us your name and address.
Yep. Okay. My name is Jamie Gruber, and I am here representing Wayfinders at 1780 Main Street in Springfield, Massachusetts. And thank you very much. As far as we, we discussed the lighting plan, we will, our architect will have that updated and we'll send that along for next meeting. As far as to follow up on a couple of the items from the last meeting, the HVAC equipment, rooftop equipment, our architect is working on providing some perspectives on that to give you a sort of a view shed analysis of what the, you know, what that might look like. And we'll have that for, for, for next meeting as well. And, let's see. And as far as the, there was some questions regarding the residential bylaw. We're working internally on that, and we will provide a written response for that ahead of our meeting for next week, or ahead of our meeting in two weeks to discuss. And the, the oil tanks, yes, the oil tank, the underground oil tank that was discovered at 31 Southeast Street is, is going to be removed as part of the, as part of the development project. And, yeah, and I'm, and I'm happy to talk about the laundry facilities. I would like to talk about the overall schedule, just to, just to confirm. I know that there were a few kinds of schedules going around, and this evening we had on the agenda the stormwater management for both sites, but we would also be prepared to discuss a couple of other items, such as property management and income restrictions. And, you know, at the application selection process, if the board was willing to hear that this evening as well.
You know, Jamie, Mr. Gruber, we had set the schedule out with the topics we were prepared to discuss, and I'm not going to change, I'm not going to add additional topics at this time, because I think those are, deserve, property management, income restrictions, those kinds of things, I think deserve study by board members before we take testimony on, hear from you. So, I think we'll just do what you have ready. This is, this is on a quick timeframe, and that's because we want to get it done as soon as possible to give you a chance to break ground as quickly as possible, if indeed the board does approve this. But, so we'll just take, we'll take what you got ready for tonight, and we'll have those other items scheduled as we have intended to schedule them coming up next week, in two weeks.
Okay, that sounds, sounds good. Okay, thank you. So I'll share my screen here, and can you all see my, my screen? And, okay, where my cursor is? Okay, so our architect went back and looked at the, their preliminary design and added some additional detail to it, and, you know, looked at the stacking washers and dryers that we typically have in our, in our developments, and at, in the laundry room in Southeast Street. They, we were able to get five washers and dryers provided. Four of them will be stacked, and there'll be an ADA accessible dryer configuration when they're side by side, and along with folding tables. The architect also provided this sketch that says what, you know, the state, the, the code requirements are one washing machine for every 10 dwelling units, and we do, we do exceed this, and this is the kind, you know, above the, above the standard. And then at Belcher Town Road, we also looked at how many we had in there, and I think that there was, the, the number has, you know, increased where we have 47 units. So it'd be roughly five washers and dryers required by code, and we're providing eight washers and dryers. They're all, you know, within close proximity to the elevator to, you know, for residents to use the elevator to go up and down the stairs. And I just wanted to kind of present this information to the board to update what was originally shown at last, at the last hearing.
So, Mr. Gruber, are, is your architect, is he can, will they be looking at possible additional laundry rooms, especially in the Belcher Town Road area that we looked? It was just discussed and contemplated that there might be a place underneath the, a lower ceiling area underneath the roof on the third floor of Belcher Town. And we were looking to see if there's any, he was going to look and see if there's any opportunities for a second laundry room on, in Southeast Street, just to reduce the amount of travel and increase in convenience for people to do their laundry. Is that still something that's being looked at?
They're, they're, they're looking at that. I mean, however, we, you know, we'd prefer to kind of have a lot of the units all in the, in the same, in the same area and accessed by elevator. I know the Southeast Street site is, is fairly, is fairly tight, and, and they felt that the Belcher Town Road location of the laundry room is, is sort of in the lobby area, and it's, you know, it has a, has a nice, you know, large window as opposed to being kind of tucked, tucked in a, in a, in a corner somewhere, so. But I know that it is, it is something that, you know, we could still look at. And, but I, I do know that HL, the EOHLC, the funding agencies sometimes have their own regulations regarding laundry room areas and, and, you know, where there's a located and how many you can provide, you know, in, in the building, so.
You think they have a limit on how many you can provide, or they have, they have restrictions on where, what the room must look like?
Um, I, I think that they, they would have, it would, it would be something that they would look at, and, you know, if there's multiple, multiple laundry rooms in the building, that it might be something that the funders would, you know, would have to approve.
Okay, so let's, let's do this. I know, I, I know there was considerable interest in increase and decreasing the amount of distance that people on the third floor of Belcher Town would have to travel for the laundry. And it would just, it's, and it's something that will reduce, you know, potential conflicts where people have a long way to go, the laundry gets kept in the washer, the dryer, and people don't really want to take other people's laundry out until they come down and do it. It's just heavier, continue to look at that, if you would. I think that you would find significant support amongst board members for additional laundry facilities if you could find a place for them, and if there's not some kind of prohibition on having more than one laundry room in a 47-unit development. That, so the, the Belcher Town Road is the most, it's the one that cries, for me, it cries out for the most for this, but I would like your, your architects to continue to look at that, if you could.
Okay.
Mr. Silver?
Yes, I have two questions about things you just said. You said you prefer, you use the word prefer, to have the laundry facilities for the building all in one place. Can you tell me why that's a preference?
Well, sometimes laundry machines flood in, in buildings and, and that sort of thing, and they also, you know, there's dryers, and, and a lot of that is for property management to be able to monitor the area in, in our, in our, you know, in our buildings.
Okay. Oh, all right. And the other question is, when you referred to other agencies that have a look at things, and the Chair asked for clarification, is, is there a limit to how many you can have? I just want to be clear. You said that some of these places look at what you're doing. Is it possible to have too many? Is that, is that a concern that you may be providing too many laundry opportunities, and therefore they would ask you to reduce them? Is that actually ever done?
We'll have, we'll have the architect look at, you know, what, what, where they, where they.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gruber. So, in terms of the items that were coming back, I think you've got, we'll be seeing the lighting study. The visibility, you're working on that. Laundry facilities, you're working on that. Rental bylaws, we'll hear more about that. We'll get a written response before the next meeting in two weeks. Is that reasonable? I mean, I don't want to rush it before it's, it's going to be ready. Is that? Ms. Fryman, I know, I think you probably are working to prepare that. Is that going to be a reasonable timeframe?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, great. And we've saddled on the oil tanks. Then I guess what we need to do is talk about the stormwater management and the stormwater infrastructure to the extent that you're, that there's information that comes from the ConCon meeting last night that you want to relate to us where you stand with that.
So, um, we actually continued the hearing last night, so we didn't, we did not present last night. We're continuing to the ninth.
Okay, to the ninth.
Correct.
And our next meeting is the, what is, just Ms. Williams? When is our next meeting date? It's in two weeks, right?
October 10th.
October 10th. So, it seems to me that having you on the agenda for stormwater, one day after the ConCon, doesn't make a lot of sense. Because if they ask you to do something to modify it, you don't have time to do that and show it to us. And you may not be able, and they, or they may have, they may continue to, they may continue the hearing as well, not reach a conclusion. So it seems to me that what we should do for the next is, is wait on the stormwater until you're able to get a resolution from the ConCon Conservation Committee, and then we can schedule the stormwater subject matter. When we could, then we could proceed with the topics that we had originally scheduled for two weeks, as well as the follow-up on the laundry facilities, et cetera, that we asked for in, for this, that you weren't able to provide us at this point in time from last meeting. Does that make sense to, either to board members or to you, Mr. Gruber?
Um, I, I just like to discuss that we presented the, we presented the stormwater, the stormwater plans to the Conservation Commission, and we also walked the sites with them, and they provided comments, and these plans are in response to those comments. So, the, the reason why we are presenting tonight is to, to present the stormwater plans as, as, as they would be presented based on the comments from the Conservation Commission. So our engineer feels as though, you know, as, as he mentioned, and I could let him speak for himself, the, the plans aren't, you know, the plans are where they need to be at for the Conservation Commission based on their comments. That's why we're present, that's why we elected to present them this evening.
So I misunderstood you. You want to present at the ConCon tonight, even though they aren't, they haven't voted, they've continued to meet, and you want to present your stormwater management plan tonight? Is that, did I misunderstand you? Is that what you wish to do?
Yeah, we would, we would like to present the stormwater management tonight. We've already, we had the initial hearing with the Conservation Commission, as Jamie noted, and we've received their comments and updated our plans accordingly with that initial hearing. And, you know, I can't speak for the Conservation Commission, but I think we are, you know, looking pretty favorable in the grand scheme of things, and we don't anticipate any, you know, future major comments that would, that would impact, you know, a presentation as
Oh.
simple as this one, you know, for, it's, I don't think we need to get into like too into the weeds of stormwater, but, you know, I can give you, give you all a pretty good overview of our design and the details associated with it.
So, you're pretty much, you're, you feel confident that this is 95% done?
Absolutely.
All right, and just, Ms. Fryman, you have your hand up. Did you want to add anything?
I'm just going to expand on that, that getting comments and the questions that you have that the ZBA has, then we can then take them back to the ZBA when we go on the night and then finalize everything. So getting your feedback would be really helpful and help us finalize the plans with the ConCon on the night.
All right. And Ms. Brestrop or Mr. Malloy, do you agree with the representation that this is pretty much, that the ConCon is pretty much comfortable with, with what they have, with what they're going to be presenting tonight? Do you have any reason to believe otherwise? Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, no, the Aaron Jacques, the Welland Administrator, thought that they could have approved it the first night. They asked some questions about, you know, could they change some of the grading and the island in the parking lot on Belcher Town Road? But it was almost, I don't want to say it was like a rhetorical question, but they just said, could you make some changes? But otherwise, she said they were basically ready to approve it that first hearing. And so, the applicant actually almost requested the extension just to work on it a little bit to see if they could make it better, but the Conservation Commission had really no issues after that first presentation. So, the expectation is that they would approve it on the ninth or whenever they hear it next.
So the continuation is just to see a final plan?
Yeah.
That's what it is, right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, all right, then let's go ahead and do it. I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion. I misunderstood what you wish to do, Mr. Gruber.
Um, okay, so I'm going to start with the Belcher Town Road site. And I know I talk fast, so feel free to interrupt at any point, just slow me down or ask questions. So, the Belcher Town Road site, we have the building, as you're all aware, that stormwater is from pitch roofs, for the most part, so it's all collected via downspouts that are located around the building face. You can see this list says DS numbers. There's quite a few of them. That stormwater is then routed underground through CPP piping that makes its way around both sides of the building, and it eventually ends up going through one of two flared end sections. So these are, you know, sections of like a plastic diffuser pipe, basically, with an open end that goes into a riprap area to slow down the water that goes into this bioretention area, per the Conservation Commission comments. We had some additional bioretention area back here that instead of having closer to the wetland, you know, in respect to the Conservation Commission, we moved to the center parking aisle and created a bioretention area in the center of the parking area. The water, as it collects in heavier storms, overflows over a riprap spillway in the back, and then goes into the conservation wetland area at the rear of the site. The vehicular water, as it travels through the site at the top of the hill, so, you know, the site generally goes from Belcher Town Road and slopes down towards the conservation area in the back. It's picked up by catch basins which flow to water quality structures, which are sort of hydrodynamic separators that allow the water to form in a cyclonic movement, shooting out the TSS and, you know, attached phosphorus and nitrogen nutrients attached to that TSS, and that's collected in the bottom of these structures, which are then cleaned out periodically in accordance with the operation and maintenance plan associated with this project. Once that water passes through the water quality structure, it continues flowing down and then into the same flared end section that meets with half of the roof that we discussed previously. And then everything passed about, you know, this point, you know, most of the parking area flows towards overland, this bioretention area in the center of the parking aisles. So as that water all flows towards the center, this sort of stone area, it is filtered through by that bioretention planting. It's a soil mix that then goes to a sand, that then, then goes to a peystone layer and then a reservoir course below that. There's an underdrain that picks up that water, wants to be filtered through that, those stone and sand mixtures. And then that water makes its way through the 10-inch pipe and then into the flare down section, into the, the main bioretention basin at the rear of the site as well. So, just in a quick summary, the roof water, you know, is already seen as clean water. That doesn't need to go through any sort of hydrodynamic separators, but it does get filtered through and infiltrated out through the bioretention basin in the rear of the site. The vehicular water is treated, you know, sort of twice. So once through the water quality structure or the parking bioretention, and then, then makes its way downstream to the larger bioretention, whereas infiltrated into the ground as well. This does meet the MS4 requirements of phosphorus removal and also meets the TSS removal requirements as well.
Any questions or comments from board members regarding the stormwater management plan for the Belcher Town Road site? Okay. Do you have similar for the Southeast Street site?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Um, Southeast Street, so we have high groundwater on this site, so the system is slightly different. So if you're wondering why we didn't go with like sort of a basin, which is, you know, considered more, almost like green infrastructure, we went through a couple of different options, and we decided that this option is going to be the best for this site. So this site's actually porous pavement, which Wayfinders does have experience with. They have, you know, porous pavement on all their, their developments as well. So, instead of water making its way through to a flare down section, we have the roof water, again, collected through downspouts, piped through, and then going through these porous pavement systems. So all the roof water goes through, subgrade through a pipe, through the reservoir course, and then makes its way to the culvert. Um, so all the roof water goes through, subgrade through a pipe, through the reservoir course, and then makes its way to the culvert uh, that exists behind the, um, or in the current like basketball area. The, it's my understanding that, uh, Amherst is, uh, choosing to, uh, reconstruct the culvert and under a different project, uh, but, you know, associated with this general work timeline. Um, a sort of stream to, uh, reconstruct a more natural condition around the parking area in the back. So this culvert will be daylight instead. A natural stream will be created around, um, and then back into the wetland, um, and then, you know, the underdrain from our porous pavement will daylight into that stream uh, after being cleaned up. So all of the roof water again goes through the roof drains and then any of the site water, so the water that falls on the landscaping, the water that falls on sidewalks and vehicular area, that will filter through the top course of the porous pavement. I can actually show you a section of that. Right here. So we've got the porous asphalt paving, so that's a, you know, almost granular sort of asphalt. The water flows through there, goes through this choker course, which is a, you know, a tight three quarter inch crushed stone layer that helps filter out um, like larger particulates. Then it goes to the bank run gravel filter course, which is even finer, uh, filters out uh, most of the TSS and attached phosphorus. Uh, and then there's a filter blanket in between that and the reservoir course, just so there isn't any sort of, uh, um, clogging of the, of the reservoir course. The reservoir course slows down the water with a, a higher void capacity. Um, and then the water makes its way towards that CPP for free to underdrain at the bottom of the section, um, which then goes out towards that, uh, reconstructed natural stream uh, that I mentioned earlier. And as you can see, we have this forty mil poly barrier around the sides. And the reason for that is, as I mentioned earlier, we have high groundwater on this site. We can't encourage infiltration. Um, as a result, but we can, uh, you know, get the water quality treatment, uh, TSS and phosphorus that we're looking for uh, by filtering through this porous asphalt section instead by keeping it out, uh, and separated from groundwater.
So you've had experience with the porous, um, asphalt. Is that, how quickly does that, does, does water filter through that porous asphalt? I'm just curious. I don't know much about this.
Really fast. So I've done a few hundred of these facilities in, uh, Washington DC and then also, um, around New England. Um, we've had like, you know, fire hoses that like you'll, you'll spill out on top of the water, um, and it'll go right through it. It sucks it up almost immediately.
Oh, so I, I, I was wondering if it would be a problem when it was, you know, freezing temperatures and you had water from snow melt and then it got very cold and you'd have a lot of ice, but it sounds like the water goes through quickly.
The water goes through very quickly, correct. And then as part of the operation and maintenance plans, um, just to, you know, avoid any clogging, um, there's a vacuum truck that, um, gets hired to vac up the top layer. Um, so over time, you know, it obviously will collect some sediments. That's the point of it being there is to clean up the water. Um, you know, periodically the vacuum truck will come out, uh, suck up everything in the top layer and it'll be restored to its original condition. Or near to it.
Interesting. Vacuuming the asphalt, cool.
Yeah, it's really cool.
I am unfamiliar with that product. Okay. Um, questions from members regarding, um, the Southeast Street site? So you're not looking at a lot of, I guess my one question is you're not looking at additional runoffs to the neighbors to the right and the left uh, from the, the additional roof area from the, uh, the new building, are you?
So runoff for both sites has been decreased compared to the existing condition.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, seem to recall you saying that at the site visit. Okay. I have no further questions regarding the stormwater plan. Anybody else? All right. Well, since we don't have other topics before us tonight, if people do have questions, they want the applicant to respond to or, or be able to present for next week. Uh, this would be a good time to raise them. But let's go through the topics, what we have scheduled for not next week, but in two weeks. Ms. Williams, can you pull up the, the, um, the schedule which had the topics on it, I think? Let me see if I can find it. Meeting schedule.
Mister Chair, it's pulled up for everyone to see. I'm sharing my screen.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so then next week we'll, uh, on the, excuse me, not next week again, on October tenth, we will deal with lighting, um, property management, income restrictions and financials. And then we'll have, we hope to have the responses to the rental uh, rental, uh, bylaw. Um, any development on laundry facilities and any progress on HVAC? Is there anything else that board members wish to have addressed in the meeting on the tenth?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Mister, Mister.
When we, when we talk about income restrictions, is there an application that can be attached to be reviewed?
I don't know. That's a good question. Mister Gruber, are you able to?
Yeah, yes, there's a, there is, there is an application that, um, we can, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Mister Malloy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I was, you know, um, the property management piece could take a bit of a discussion, but the income restriction and financials are highly regulated and really we're not, I mean, we, we don't have much say in that in terms of the zoning board, right? The, the funders, the state regulate that very heavily as well as the application selection process, which would be in, um, hearing five, and then there's local preference. So I, I, I think we could actually, if property management is there and we're talking about income restrictions, I think we could get into application selection and local preference. And so I wouldn't want to limit the agenda to those three items and then not be able to proceed if there's time. And so, for instance, income restrictions, they have their pro forma, their AMIs, you know, they're hitting a number of different AMI levels. I'm not sure exactly how much information the zoning board needs for income restrictions. We, we, you know, we're not, we can't, at this point, are we going to say, well, we want to see more units at a certain AMI? Uh, same with financials, we can't make the project uneconomic. And so, you know, really it's like a broad overview of sources, uh, you know, you know, expenses and, you know, is it financially feasible, which has already been determined. So I, I just, I want to make sure we're not getting so detailed, uh, in the review. Same with like the application form. I'm not sure what, you know, that's something that the state has to, and the funders have to approve. And so I'm not sure what, 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 what review the zoning board would have getting to that level of detail in terms of actually looking at an app, a resident application form.
Uh, you know, I, I understand our, the limits we have, Mister Malloy, and I appreciate them and, and we may not be able to change things, but the board has to approve this and and I think the understanding what the income restrictions are, what the financials are of the, of the, the, the applicant, as well as the other things that they'll be coming back with. I mean, those are all, I, they're appropriate for us to try to understand. And even if we can't change them, I don't think it's a waste of time for us, for the board to understand what the property management is, what the income restrictions are, or the financials.
No, I don't think.
As well as the application selection process and, and, um, I think we could have, I'm comfortable with laying out the topics as we've laid them out. And I don't want to delay this any, but I, I don't want to have, I want to have members know exactly what they're going to deal with in each meeting and be able to prepare and ask their questions and be ready to, to, uh, move forward and not have, uh, uncertainty as to what's coming up on the, on the agenda. So I would, my preference would be to deal with what they could, for them to come back with as much as they possibly can on the questions we already have. And then to have property management, income restrictions and financials, uh, for the next meeting. We're, we're moving along, uh, I think we're moving along at a good clip. We have until January to do this, and I think we're ahead of schedule already. And so I, I don't want to delay this at all. And I think we should move it, but I'm, I'm not, I'm comfortable with the, with the agenda that we have. And, and I'm also comfortable with members knowing exactly what the, what is the, uh, the nature of.
Sure, sure. You know, I, I, I think that it's all worthwhile. I don't want to say skip over it, but like tonight, we're, it's been a really short meeting and I feel like we could have um, I just want to ask on the tenth, is that a half meeting for the ZBA? Cause you know, sometimes we have half meetings. So is this a half meeting on the tenth or is it a full meeting for the Wayfinders project?
The tenth is a half meeting for the Wayfinders, um, but then we have Red Gate Lane. So that might not take that long.
I mean, I was just thinking, I mean, for instance, what if we had, um, application selection processes tied to incomes? So if we lump that on the tenth, even if we don't get to it, it would, you know, if, if we listed it, it would just not preclude the board from talking about it. You know, if it, if it's discussed, that's, that's all, um, I'm suggesting.
I understand. I think in my, in my experience, the application, application selection process and local preference take a lot of time to discuss. Members really want to understand it and they may not be able to affect it, but they want to understand it. And it's complicated and local preference is complicated. So I think a meeting for those two topics makes sense. And I'm going to, as Chair, I'm taking my prerogative and have the hearings scheduled for October fifth, or October seventeenth and have those two topics on the, on the agenda. We may have additional topics that, um, come up in questions we have. And it may be that some of the questions we've already asked may not be ready for our consideration for, to present to us until that time. So I'm comfortable with this, uh, this layout and I'm comfortable with, uh, this, the schedule we have at current time. Mister Gruber?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the, um, the application will just be a sample of the application. Those are, those are tailored for each, you know, individual, individual project. So we'll be able to provide a sample of something, um, similar to that. And, um, we'll also be giving a, just a, we can give a, a brief report as to how the Conservation, uh, Commission meeting, um, went the preceding night.
Great.
Um, I, and I did have one question, um, regarding, since we have the agenda up. Are we able to kind of check off the items that, you know, w- w- we have this kind of this outstanding list where the lighting, the rental bylaw, the laundry facilities and the HVAC, um, you know, rooftop equipment, but are we, once we discuss the items, can we move on from those and know that, you know, our design team is, is, um, has, has met the um, expectation of the, of the zoning board?
In, unless there are additional questions that have been asked, I mean, the questions on architecture, I think are the ones that are outstanding. I don't think there's anything else that's out there. Um, on mechanical systems, I think it's the same. I think we have our outstanding questions and I don't anticipate going back to those. But something could, something could develop and it could happen, but I think you, we did a pretty good job and a pretty, uh, I think the board did a, and you presented a pretty, um, fulsome description of both the architecture and mechanical systems. And we had just a couple of questions that came from that. So I think we're pretty much done with that. Stormwater, I don't think we have much more unless the Concom would say something different. And for the other things, I think we will move through them and be done with them, but you never know if there's a question that comes from, from something, from a topic or not. And so I'm not going to preclude the ability of the board to raise a question, but so far I haven't seen that those items that are checked off, we're going to have to revisit.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have no further, I have no further comments on tonight's meeting. Um, other members of the board? Any comments, questions, concerns regarding this application? If not, I would, um, entertain a motion that we continue this public hearing until October tenth at six o'clock.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to, um, continue this hearing until October tenth. Um, any discussion? If not, the, the vote occurs. The Chair votes aye. Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister White?
Aye.
Aye.
Mister Slobiter?
Aye.
All right, we will return on the tenth and I think you, we understand what's on the agenda. Work with the staff if you have any questions or and they can get to us to make sure that we have the, uh, the agenda for the tenth set. Next order of business is public comment on, oh, I'm sorry. We continued the hearing before we asked if there was any public comment. And I, that is my mistake. So I, what I'd like to do is open up, uh, public comment on this matter if there is any public comment on the matter before us. I think we can do, Carolyn, will you help me out with this? I closed, I continued it before. I allowed for public comment and I, I rushed it. Can we have public comment in separate?
You, you certainly can, Mister Chairman. You have to vote or close the meeting, so you can go back to public comment.
All right. Is there, this, this is probably moot, but is there any, is there any public comment, any members of the public who wish to speak on the matter before us tonight, which is the Wayfinders? Confidence permit?
I have no one wishing to speak on my end.
All right, so we'll move on to the next order of business, which is public comment on any matter that's not before us tonight.
Still no public comment.
Still no public comment. Great. Okay, um, the next order of business is new business, which in any matter not, um, anticipated within the last forty-eight hours. And that normally includes the, um, the schedule. So Ms. Williams put up the schedule again, so we understand, I mean, the, the whole ZBA schedule, not just the Wayfinder's schedule. So we have on the tenth, we have halfway, Wayfinders and half, um, the, it's bouncing around on me, uh, half the Red Gate Lane. Uh, Mister Slobiter, you're not going to be there for that one. And for, on the seventeenth, we have Wayfinders only. And on the twenty-fourth, we don't have Wayfinders. We have three twenty-eight College Street. Um, and then we go back to Wayfinders for waivers, conditions and findings on the fourteenth. Okay? Any questions about the schedule? Yes, Mister Gruber?
Great, thank you. Uh, just on the schedule, I see that Wayfinders is listed above the other. Will that, does that indicate that we'll be on it at six, six PM or will, will we be on, um, afterwards?
I would have you on first.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding the, uh, from board members and comments? If not, um, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, motion to adjourn is not debatable. The Chair votes aye. Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister Slobiter?
Aye.
Mister Henry?
Aye.
And Mister White?
Aye.
Thank you. Meetings adjourned. We'll all see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Have a great night, everybody.